Gracious God, each of us in our own way from our own traditions would invoke your presence with us here tonight as we gather on this summournious occasion. In your wisdom-loving God, you have sent us within families. You have gathered families into communities and communities that combine to make us a strong nation. We are thankful for the people of the community of Orange County. And we are grateful to these individuals who have come forward to serve in elected positions on their behalf. I pray your blessings upon all of the incoming school board members, those that are returning, and all the superintendent and the administrative staff, administrators and faculty that will be working with this board. We pray, God, that you would continue to guide them, that you would grace them, that you would give them the wisdom that they need to make the decisions for the better good of our students and for the Orange County Public Schools governance. We pray your blessings upon this particular ceremony tonight, and we pray blessings upon the families that are gathered here as their loved ones take the oath of office. And I pray that you continue to unite us, to continue to make us one, continue to allow us to work together to build a great community and continue to build a great school district. And we pray now and ask all these blessings in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop Kevin from ours, the Impact Church. And now, we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to take this moment to present to you our dynamic superintendent, Dr. Barbara Jenkins, adventuring on a new journey with a new board, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to only say a couple of comments here. I said them to all the individuals, but I wanted to say it publicly as well. We are extremely excited about this next phase of our journey here in Orange County Public Schools. This is my eighth year as superintendent. And I will tell you, from all that we've accomplished, there is so much more to be done. My staff knows I love the term Robert Frost, "We have miles to go before we sleep." And so I'm excited about these committed board members that are joining, three former board members, and extremely pleased, people pushed me up to say this, so I guess I will. We call it girl power. It is the first time there's been an all-female... So they put me up to say that. Woody, I'm sorry. Woody is not on the school board, he is a general counsel to the board. I am the superintendent. In case you didn't know, since 1869, out of nineteen individuals who have been at the helm for Orange County Public Schools, I am actually the first female. And so when we say girl power, we mean it pretty seriously, this board. Secondly, I wanted to thank all of those who put their names on the ballot and take the abuse and the rigor and the exhaustion of running for office, that they would actually consider being on this board. I want to publicly thank those individuals. There's another group that I'd like to thank as well, though, and we often forget. We said it when we had outgoing board members. The families of our elected school board members made quite a sacrifice as well. And so before all of the pomp and circumstance starts, I'd like for family members of board members to stand today and thank you for your sacrifice as well. So we understand sometimes two nights a week and weekends and different activities really mean a sacrifice for family time, and especially those who have children at home as well, but spouses, anyone who's in an extended family category, all of them make a sacrifice so that you may serve. So my personal congratulations, first of all, my commendations for returning board members, Kat Gordon and Pam Cool, for returning re-elected board member Linda Coburn, and then for those coming on for the first time, Melissa Berg, Karen Castor-Dentel, Johanna Lopez, Angie Gallo, and our new chair, Teresa Jacobs. All of them now hold the title "The Honorable."
Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Let's give our superintendent an awesome round of applause. We really thank you for your great leadership, not only in Orange County and not only in the state of Florida, but we thank you for your leadership in the nation. We really appreciate that. Next, we have the Honorable Judge Fenwick Lawton, Chief Judge of the Ninth Judicial Court, and it's the Ninth Judicial Circuit Court. I'm going to ask the Chief Judge if he would come forward at this time, and you will be administering the oath of office. You will do it in the order of the Chairman, Burns, which is Teresa Jacobs, Angie Gallo, Johanna Lopez, Linda Coburn, Karen Castor-Dentel, and Melissa Berg. Judge, they're all in your hands right now.
You will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and perform the duties of member of the school board of Orange County, Florida. Congratulations.
Angie Gallo, our next board recipient.
I do solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and perform the duties of member of the school board of Orange County, Florida.
Our next school board member, Johanna Lopez.
I do solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and perform the duties of member of the school board of Orange County, Florida.
Now, our school board member that had been re-elected for four years, Linda Coburn.
I do solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and to perform the duties of member of the school board of Orange County, Florida. Congratulations.
And as Linda Coburn takes her seat, our next board member, Karen Castor-Dentel.
Raise your right hand or repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and to perform the duties of member of the school board of Orange County, Florida. Congratulations.
And now, we're asking Melissa Berg, will you come forward?
I do solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and perform the duties of member of the school board of Orange County, Florida.
Madam Chairman, Teresa Jacobs, the Honorable Judge Fenwick Lawton, Chief Judge of the Ninth Judicial Circuit Court, have installed, duly installed, all of your members as a working school board for Orange County, Florida. Take the chair.
Thank you. We are honored to be joined by so many esteemed members of the public that are here today. I could not be more proud of serving alongside of the board members we have. What a phenomenal group of individuals. And I would say women, but you're not just a phenomenal women, a phenomenal group of leaders in this community. The wealth of experience that this board is going to bring, the diversity of opinions and experience that this board is going to bring, is going to make us better, crisper, sharper, and more attentive to the needs of our children and the needs of our entire school district. I couldn't be more proud of the work that this school district has done under the leadership of Dr. Jenkins and the leadership of the previous board, taking us to heights that I don't think I could have imagined myself when my children were in school in 2000, with the graduation rate of 50%. So we have come a very long way in a very short period of time, but there's so much more to do. There's so much more to do. But we know that the only way we can do it is when we do it as a community. It doesn't matter how good your leadership is on this board, if this whole community is not involved, engaged, in advocating for our children and for our education system, we will not succeed. So that's why I'm especially proud to see so many of you here today. There are so many elected officials, and I am going to get in trouble if I try to start calling them out. So if I could ask that, if you're an elected official, I know I saw Senator Torres, I saw, if you all would just stand, and if you're already standing, raise your hand. Thank you as well for your support of our public education system. We're going to be calling on you between our teachers and our PTSAs and our unions. We are going to be calling on all of you. There's lots of things that we can spend time disagreeing about, but we really simply can't afford to spend time disagreeing. We've got to find those things that we can agree on, and we've got to get to work. Because every day that we're not working hard for our children and making this the best education system in the nation is a day lost in a child's life, and that's inexcusable. So, my goal is to work together with you, to work together with this board, with our superintendent, with every single one of you who cares about our kids and cares about education, to make this a model for the nation. With that said, I'm thrilled and honored to be able to introduce Angie Gallo. Member Gallo, comments, please?
Hi, hon. Hello. As you can see, there's a little bit of a larding threat going on up here. No, I just want to say I'm very blessed and I'm very honored to be the new school board member for District One. I've had the opportunity of attending a couple of schools with Joey Caddell, and I keep saying that I feel like the luckiest girl in the world, and I really, really do. I've been blessed, I've been blessed with a great family. This started for me way back in elementary school, when my oldest started school, and I decided, me and my best friend Kellyanne decided that we wanted to get involved in the elementary school. And for those of you who are involved in PTA, you know, it goes something like this, you show up and then you kind of get voluntold what to do. Well, Kellyanne and I got voluntold to be corresponding secretaries by Sylvia Boyd, who was an awesome principal at Riverdale Elementary, and that's where it all began for me. From there, I got hooked on advocacy in PTA. Many may not realize that the PTA is an association born on advocacy. It's how we got our start, was for the children, for labor laws, for doing better for our children. And that's really kind of what sucked me into the PTA and has kept me there all these years, is the advocacy for children. And I'll never forget, way back when Speaker Cannon was serving his first term in the legislature, going to a legislative breakfast at Glen Ridge Middle School. And I sat there, and one of my mentors, Don Stewart, was up at the podium, and she was talking about this bill and that bill, and I was listening to her in awe, and I thought, you know, I thought it was a foreign language, I didn't know what she was really saying, but I knew it was important. And she told us that we had to get involved, that as parents and as advocates, that we could do better for our children, we could make public education better for the teachers and the students. And I remember looking up at her and go, "When I grow up, I wouldn't be just like her." I'm happy to say that she's in the audience today. And... She's way back there. I didn't get here alone. You know, I was raised on the belief where much is given, much is expected, and that came from my mom. And my mom always pushed me to be the best that I could be and to try harder, and when I didn't try hard enough or do everything that I could be, she got mad at me. And I never understood it back then, I'm like, "Wait a minute, I just didn't make the dance team." You know, you should feel sorry for me. And she's like, "No, you get back up and you just keep trying, because eventually you'll get to be where you want to be." So Mom, thank you. Campaigning is not a spectator sport. You're all in, and my family was all in. My family, my friends, were all in from the very beginning. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank those, my husband, who's been my rock. I spent a lot of time in Tallahassee. I spent a lot of time at elementary schools and middle schools and high schools, you know, putting together dances, fundraisers, doing what I could for the kids here in Orlando. And he always had my back, and he always knew that what I wanted to do was very important to me, even though he had to make sacrifices. He's working long jobs and he, or long days at his job, and he'd come home and take care of the kids so that I could go advocate for all your children. And without him and without the blessings that God's given me, that wouldn't have happened. So, thank you. My dad and my grandmom, well, I call her Grandma Anne because that's what my kids call her, but she's my stepmom. It's my stepmom, Anne, my stepdad, Don, my brother, Mark, his beautiful wife, Linda, they were all in, they campaigned for me, they came to advance, they put out signs for me, they waved signs for me, they called all their friends, they implored everybody to vote for me. To my friend Kellyanne, and Rebecca, and Rob, and Danielle, and Lori, your guidance and your support, I can't tell you how much it meant to me. And to all the teachers that supported me and called your friends and said, "You've got to vote for her, please vote for her," no, it means a lot to me. And for everybody that supported me, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm thrilled to death to be here. I look so forward to working with this great group of ladies. This is my heart and my PTA family, and I say thank you, it all started with you. So thank you for giving me the background and the courage to do this. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. It is my honor to be here sharing this space with all of you. Thank you for being here. I want to use this opportunity to thank those who made it possible for me to be here. First, I am so proud of the hard and professional work of the students who designed and ran my campaign, "Havton." Thank you for staying with me until the end of the historical path and for sharing my vision of fighting for fairness, empowerment, and unity for our community. Most importantly, thank you for believing in me. My commitment to you and to every OCPS student is that, as I begin my role as an Orange County School Board member, I will continue to be a fearless advocate for student empowerment and academic success. To the Orange County teachers and staff members, thank you for your feedback and for helping our People Power Student Lead Campaign. As a fellow teacher, I know firsthand about your struggles and challenges inside and outside of the classroom. Please know that I am here for you. Thank you to the many parents who have shared their concerns and ideas on how to improve our local school system. I'm committed to continue to listen to you at all times, making sure every family gets the representation they deserve. I am here for you. To my district two constituents, I am extremely humbled by your support. Your voice is my voice, and I will make sure that every corner of our district is represented. I will not let you down. I am here for you. To my four children, Esteban, Gio, Alondra, and Gianna, thank you for being alongside me in this journey. This past year, we came to understand that on the road to achieve our goals, we come up against obstacles and tests that make us stronger. In order to overcome them, we have to always persevere and stay focused. We are never alone, as God will always look over us, like he has. I love you deeply, and I cannot imagine my life without you. To the bus drivers and all those involved in our transportation services, I am here for you. To the clerks and to the janitors and the cafeteria spa, I am here for you. To the administrators, to the counselors and the media specialists, I am here for you too. Esta nueva generación de líderes nos ha demostrado que en la unión está la fuerza. Los exhorto a dejar atrás las diferencias y enfocarnos en construir un mejor futuro para nuestros jóvenes, nuestras familias, y nuestras comunidades. Juntos podemos seguir haciendo historia. We have an incredible opportunity to work together to create a brighter future for Orange County, understanding that every community deserves attention, every family deserves representation, and every student deserves an opportunity to be successful. Together, we can continue opening doors. Gracias y si se puede. Thank you.
No matter how many times you do this, this is a moment when everything goes out of your head, but I want you to know, just based on the first two, this is why I've been telling everyone, we're going to be just fine. We have an excellent, outstanding new board that I am proud to serve alongside of. I want you to know that when we have our moment of silence at the beginning of every meeting, I want you to know the prayer that I always say every week, and that is, "May the words of my mouth and the thoughts of my mind be pleasing to you." And that is what helps to guide me as we take on this great task and challenge of our over 200,000 children that we serve and 24,000 employees that we have in our care. I want to take this moment to thank the outgoing board members who have been tremendous mentors to me. I want to thank my family who is taking up a whole row here, who I would not be here without. My sisters are here, my daughter is here, my mother is here, my niece is here, and my two of my closest, dearest friends are here, who really, without you, I would not be sitting in this chair. And most importantly, I do want to thank my husband, who is my rock and has been my partner and my biggest cheerleader, and truly is the one who talked me into doing this when thinking about a campaign is daunting, putting yourself out there in a public way and taking on the responsibility of all of these children and all of these employees. And my husband said to me, "Linda, you have never let fear be the reason not to do good in the world." And that is a true story, I had no answer for that, and that's what got me into this. So I am proud to serve alongside this esteemed group of women. I am proud and honored to serve the children of Orange County, and I am proud to have the service of our 24,000 employees. And really, every decision that I make, those are the only two groups that I consider. What is best for our children, what is best for our employees, and that's how I'll continue to serve. Thank you. Member, here it is. You have to push it hard, and red means talk, and green doesn't exist. I can see it now. All right, well, I want to thank so many of my friends and family for coming here today. Start with my role model as my mother. And if I didn't mention my role model, my mother, Kat Gordon, was going to do it for me. So my mother, Betty Castor, was the Commissioner of Education during a critical time in my decision of what I wanted to do in life. And I always liked children, and she kind of steered me in the path, "Well, you know, you'd be a great teacher." She was a teacher, so she saw that in me too. So it was critical that the role she played in my development, and then she encouraged me to continue, and so I don't think she knows the impact she's had, but I'm here today because she showed me how to use her voice to speak on behalf of teachers and students and do what I can to make the world better. I also want to thank my stepdad, Sam Bell, who's done so much for children in the state in the legislature. And then my sister, Kathy, is here. There she is. And my brother, Frank, is here as well, and his wife, Rita. I want to thank Mark Pafford for all the support he's given me as well. And I also have other family members. My stepmother, Nikki Castor, is here from Tampa, and my former in-laws, Bob and Betty Kimbrel, and Bill and Pat Dentel are also here, and that means a lot to me that you all are here. But there's two people that I didn't mention yet who kind of make this job so important to me. Those are my two kids, who teach me everything I need to know about being a teenager. I still don't know enough, I'm sure, but Wyatt and Caroline are high schoolers, and I kind of process everything I say and do through how is it going to affect them, whether it's at home or at school, so you guys are very important to me. I also want to thank my friends and supporters, people who really...
I also want to thank my friends and supporters, people who really helped me get here, and also to so many teachers. Having been a teacher for 15 years and teaching here in Orange County Public Schools, it means a lot to be sitting up here today, and I'm going to take it very seriously and try to maintain that perspective of a teacher and a parent while I'm up here and making those decisions, and I look forward to getting started. Thank you.
Number Melissa Berg.
First of all, I want to thank all of my family and friends who made it out to here tonight. You know, like it's been said, it takes a lot of sacrifice from the people that you love and that care about you to run for office, so everybody in that row sacrificed a little bit, whether it was, you know, waving signs or just supporting me along the way, you know, my sweet children, Abigail and Madeline are in there, are sitting there too, they had to sacrifice quite a lot for a year of running for office, lots of Saturdays knocking on doors, and so I'm truly thankful for them, for always believing in their mom and standing by me, and when things got tough, and, you know, we made it a little encouraging, we would talk about our why, why we were doing this, we were doing it for the children, for the children of Orange County, and to make, to get on this board and have a voice for those children, so I'm just so thankful for them, and my sweet husband, who's sitting back there, he got me through, got me through, and, you know, the support that he gave me was unwavering, and when things got tough, he always talked me through it, and so I'm definitely here because of him. Now, I'm just so excited that I have the pleasure and honor of sitting up here and serving with these other fierce women, look at this group of women, it's amazing. You know, my husband and I said from the very beginning of this whole thing, that if it was God's will for me to serve on this board, that it would happen, that we would just follow His lead, and as I'm sitting up here tonight, it occurs to me that I was just one little part of His plan. This is, this is a great group, it's going to be fantastic. What an exciting time this is for Orange County Public Schools, I'm so proud to be a part of it, and I'm honored to be able to serve on this board and serve the children and the families and the schools and the communities in Orange County. Thank you so much.
And before we move on to the business portion of our meeting, I want to take just a minute again to thank each and every one of you that's here, that has played a part in the elections of each of us, those of you who are here just because you care about our kids. I want to mention my husband Bruce, who, most of you who have known me very long, have gotten to know my husband, and my daughter Lisa, when we talk about role models, you don't get to talk to me very long before you're hearing about my daughter and my three boys and the role models that they have played in my life. My good friend Stina Duba, who's put up with every campaign I've been in and has always been there for me. But I also want to recognize that in the second row, I filled up the second row with my former work family, always will be my family, but it's amazing the number of people it takes to make things happen, and when you have good teams and good teamwork, you can do just about anything. I've had the privilege and honor of serving with some incredible people, and I'm looking forward to this privilege and honor of serving with this team of incredible people, including Eric. Eric, good to have you with us, we've brought some people with us from Orange County Board of County Commissioners Chambers, that I hope will become regulars here, Eric Brown and Trini and others, so thank you for staying with us, and thank you for continuing to support our children, and with that, we're going to get down to business. Okay.